Good morning and welcome to the January 16th, 2019 Board of County Commissioners Meeting. I'm Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer with Sedgwick County. On the agenda this morning, we have a proclamation declaring Martin Luther King Junior Day, a presentation of the Chairman's Award, a public hearing regarding the safety standards for platform lifts and stairway chairlifts, a potential addition to the 2019 legislative platform. County Treasurer Linda Kazire will present a prepayment property taxes presentation for the commissioners. We'll have a follow-up item for the Board of Bids and Contracts, and then commissioners will select a new Chair and Chair Pro Tem for 2019. This morning, I'd like to invite up Bishop Wade Moore to talk about a few events happening over the weekend in honor of Martin Luther King Junior.
Good morning, Bishop Moore.
Good morning. Good morning to the Sedgwick County Board of County Commissioners. Good to see everybody. Excited about this weekend with all the Dr. Martin Luther King Junior activities that are going on. This year is kind of special in that this would have been Dr. King's 90th birthday. So it's pretty special to us to be celebrating this weekend, and so it has a lot of meaning for people around the world, not just in our community in the United States, but around the world, and how Dr. King impacted lives and brought change around the world. And so this weekend, what we'll be doing is we'll start Saturday morning with a free breakfast at Christian Faith Center at 11:30 South Broadway. We give a free breakfast every year to the first 100 people. After 100, then it's $3 apiece for that. But everybody's invited, and we particularly work with children, want children to learn more about Dr. King and about his legacy. And so then after the breakfast, what we do is we have kindergarten through eighth graders, they will go into classes, and they'll learn more about Dr. King and his life and his legacy, because a lot of people only know about the "I Have a Dream" speech. And so we teach them those things, and our high school students will be sitting in on a panel discussing race relations today, where we've come from, where we're going. And then at about 9:40 a.m., we line up at Broadway and Morris, and we take everyone on a march from Christian Faith Center down to Chester Lewis Reflection Square, and we have any elected officials or any community leaders, we have them give a brief speech there, and then we dismiss. With that, people bring non-perishable items, and we collect non-perishable items on that morning to feed the community throughout the year, people that are hungry. So that's what we do for Dr. Martin Luther King Day. And then also, that Saturday evening, Governor Laura Kelly will be here in Wichita. She will be at Chapel Hill. I think that program starts at 6:00 p.m. She will be speaking, and Dr. Kevis Harding will be speaking. And there is a Lincoln University, a historically black college/university. They will be in town, and they will be singing there. And then Monday at 12 noon, the big gathering kind of culminates everything, is at the Metroplex at 29th and Oliver, Wichita State University Metroplex, to where the community comes together, and we have a great celebration there. This year, we have Pastor Marvin Winings. Pastor Winings pastors in Detroit. He's a world-renowned recording artist, so he'll be here in town with us for the culmination of it. So we're excited about it, and thank you for your support and continuing, helping us continue in the legacy of Dr. King.
Thank you. I appreciate you very much being here today and letting us know what kind of events we've got coming up over the weekend. I'd have a comment from Commissioner Howell.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Bishop Moore, for being here. I'm a huge fan of yours, and I love you so much.
Thank you.
You're a great man in this community, and I was just curious, you gave us a lot of details, and so if I wanted to go back and read the opportunities, the times and places to be, is there a place I can go to find this information?
Yes. Let's see, where do we have all the information? I believe you can go to the Community Voice, to their webpage, and it should have all Dr. Martin Luther King activities listed for Wichita.
Well, thank you for all you do, and just a point of reference, you are the creator of the school here in town.
Yes, sir.
I forgot the name all of a sudden.
The Urban Preparatory Academy.
Urban Preparatory Academy, and they're doing tremendous things over there, and you're an outstanding man, so thank you for being here. Excuse me on my voice, but we have a proclamation we're going to get to read here in just a minute, and so I just want to say thank you for being a part of all of this. It's exciting to have you here today, and for all you do here, appreciate you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz?
Can we, I think we could put this probably on our website too as well, sedgwickcounty.gov. Can we do that?
We'd love for you to do that.
Yeah, cool. Awesome.
Again, Bishop, thank you very much for being here and letting us know about the events that are coming up this weekend.
Thank you.
All right, and following this meeting this morning, at 10:30, there will be a reception for our new commissioners and the new commission chairman. That will be here at 10:30 in the boardroom on the third floor here at the courthouse, 525 North Main. And I'd also like to remind everyone that county offices will be closed on Monday, January 21st, in honor of Martin Luther King Junior Day, and there will not be a regular commission meeting on Wednesday, January 23rd. Rather, it will be on Wednesday, January 30th. So with that, Chairman, I'll let you kick off the meeting.
Well, thank you very much, Kate. I appreciate it. This time, I'd like to call the meeting to order for Wednesday, January 16th, 2019. Also, before that we go any further, I want to welcome Commissioner Lacy Cruz and Pete Meitzner. This is our first commission meeting this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here, and welcome. With that, next item, please.
Invocation to be led by Pastor Gary Brooks, Aldersgate United Methodist Church. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
We stand in the shadow of a great legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Junior, and thank you, Bishop, for sharing the events of this weekend. Let us pray. In the hearts and minds of people everywhere is the hope for a good day. May peace and love gild our thoughts and actions. O God, we boldly come to you with a plea for wisdom and discernment for our commissioners and all those who work for and with them. We thank you for this corner of America that we live and work in, for you have blessed us in so many ways. May the efforts and decisions of this day continue to prosper each of the citizens of this county, and may all of us practice responsible citizenship until everyone is free, and may we paint the world beautiful with the brushstrokes of our faithful service. Grant that the spirit of kindness and mercy prevail this day, and in the measure that we honor you, O God, bless us with your everlasting goodness. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Chairman Dennis.
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
I do not have anyone signed up to speak on the public agenda this morning, but if anyone's in the audience that would like to speak, you do have an opportunity at this time. Seeing no one, next item, please.
Proclamations. Item A, proclamation proclaiming January 21st, 2019, as Martin Luther King Junior Day.
Commissioners, I have a proclamation to read. Whereas, I beg your pardon, I'm actually going to ask Commissioner Howell to read this.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I requested this, and so I appreciate the opportunity to read it. It does say, "Whereas, Americans have worked since the founding of our nation to create a country full of opportunity, where anyone with enough fortitude and spirit can rise to achievement, regardless of race, religion, or creed; and, whereas, those high aspirations require constant work and vigilance. The Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Junior dedicated his life to these ideals and throughout his life strived to make the United States inclusive and prosperous for Americans from all walks of life. And, whereas, today we celebrate the never-ending work for which Dr. King and countless other leaders fought so bravely, on this day we hope to fulfill his vision of a country devoted to rejecting bigotry in all its forms into embracing diversity at every opportunity. Now therefore be it resolved that Chairman David Dennis and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners to hereby proclaim January 21st as Martin Luther King Junior Day, in recognition of Dr. King's service to his country and his mission to create a world where people are judged not by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character." And Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion when you adopt the proclamation.
Second? We have two seconds. Seeing nothing else, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And this will be accepted by Bishop Wade Moore, Senior Pastor, Christian Faith Center.
On behalf of the community, not just one community, but the entire Sedgwick County community, we want to thank the Sedgwick County Board of Commissioners for recognizing Dr. King Day and helping us keep the legacy of Dr. King going. Again, this would have been his 90th birthday, which is very significant. We've made many strides, many strides. We've come a long way, and we've still got a long way to go, still got a long way to go. And I believe that God has got his hand on our country, on his people, and so many people are given opportunities today that they never would have had years ago. And so I thank you for your support and continuing the legacy of Dr. King.
Bishop Mayor, more, once again, thank you very much for being here this morning. Appreciate that. Also, I want to thank Pastor Gary Brooks for the invocation this morning. Thank you. Next item, please.
New Business, Part One. Item B, presentation of the 2018 Chairman's Award.
I'm going to move down to the podium, and we'll start from there. One of the nice things that the chairman gets to do as they're finishing up their term as the chairman is to present an award to someone that they feel is deserving recognition in Sedgwick County. First of all, I want to welcome leadership from USD 259 from being here today, Colonel Hester, JROTC cadets from USD 259. And we also have some guests in the audience today from Wichita State University, because they are going to be starting a JROTC program in the fall of 2019, so they have joined us today. But the JROTC program here in Sedgwick County and USD 259 specifically is one that connects the youth to their community. They do public service, thousands of hours of public service each year. Anytime that you see someone that needs an event that has a color guard, you see USD 259 JROTC. The thousands of turkeys that are collected each year before Thanksgiving is helped by USD 259 JROTC. The Veterans Day Parade that's presented down Main Street that starts right out in front of our courthouse each year is put on by USD 259 JROTC. They have 2,500 cadets that form up inside of Century Two each year also for a formal military parade, and anyone that hasn't had an opportunity to see a formal military parade, it is something that will bring chills to your heart, and especially when you see 2,500 of our citizens that are honoring our veterans all at one time. I am very proud that I have been a friend of Colonel Hester for a number of years. Some of you know that I taught at North High School after I retired from the Air Force for 11 years. I was not a JROTC instructor, I was a business teacher, but I got to see what the JROTC cadets were doing. Then when I was elected to the State Board of Education, one of the things that we were looking at was, how do we connect students to schools, to keep them in the schools, to give them a positive gang to work with? I started working with a gentleman, a three-star general from the Army, named General Frickley, and he was the commander of Sessions Command at that time. And what he was looking at at that point in time was that only 25% of all the graduates across the entire United States are qualified to go into the military. Well, first of all, I want to make it clear, JROTC is not a recruiting platform for the military. But he was having a problem, because everybody wants that 25% of the kids, because they're the ones that are going to be successful no matter where they go in the future. And the reason it's only 25% is, first of all, we've got students that can't pass the physical exam. We've got kids that can't pass the mental exam, the ASVAB test, and we've got kids that have made poor choices in their lives and no longer qualified for that. So again, that 25% are critical to the future of our country, to make sure that they are there to start leading our country when people like me are no longer available to do that, and we need to start grooming those people. We did a study with USD 259 while I was on the State Board of Education. Statistically, at that point in time, and I'm sure that numbers haven't changed, the graduation rates are higher for the students that are in JROTC than all the rest of the students across the entire district. The state testing exams are statistically higher for all of the kids that are in JROTC than from across the rest of the community. Those are important statistics. They show that a program like this is a positive gang. They have something that they can relate to, that gives them discipline, that gives them a purpose in life, that gives them physical activity, that provides all of the different things that negative gangs can provide, but in a positive aspect. So I'm very, very proud of everything that's happened with USD 259, and Colonel Hester is the backbone of that organization. He is truly a great gentleman. I've had the pleasure of knowing him for quite some time, but he brought with him today, part of his leadership cadets, and the leadership cadets that are here today, I had an opportunity to sit on their board to help select them, so that's another thing that I am very proud of. And he brought along, we have a unique opportunity here in USD 259, in that they have put a leadership corps in the middle schools to start at that level, to start honoring and developing the discipline, and to teach what it is to be a citizen here in the United States of America. Another thing that they do is that they have an opportunity periodically where the students can come up and speak to large groups and tell what JROTC means to them, and if you haven't ever had an opportunity to hear that, that is something that you need to hear. But not only the students, but their parents come up, and they speak to tell what an impact JROTC has had on those students. So with all of that, I've spoke too long, because I want them to have an opportunity to speak, but I am so proud of what USD 259 JROTC program does for our students here in this area. So with that, I'd like to present in recognition of Wichita Public Schools' JROTC Leadership Corps for Outstanding Service to Sedgwick County 2018 from the Chairman of the Board of County Commissioners. And we'll go around in front of the podium so that we can get pictures. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Colonel Hester, because some of the cadets and Colonel Hester want to speak, and while they're doing that, I'm going to move back up to the bench, but I want to congratulate them once again. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Chair Dennis, members of commission, Dr. Irving, there's no words to express our appreciation for this prestigious recognition and award. It means a lot to us. We started junior ROTC in Wichita Public Schools in 1994. We had three schools and 240 cadets, and today, as Chair Dennis indicated, we have 18 schools and 2,500 cadets now, 1,000 in junior ROTC and 1,500 in the leadership program at our middle school programs. It has been an outstanding success because we have such outstanding cadets in this school district who really step up and take charge, lead the way. They are readily volunteer for any mission, and they stand out in their schools. As you can see today, why they do, because they look so good, and they just, they perform as well as they look. Today, I have Grant Hardner from southeast, Lindsey Fleming from north, who are members of our core staff in the school district, and Carol Laura from Mead Middle School. These three cadets are going to accept this award. I've asked, when Carol told me that she wanted to also come here and be a member of this team, I asked her to write a statement to me telling me why she'd like to come. And this morning, I asked Carol if she would just read what she wrote, because I think it really spells out why our junior ROTC and leadership programs are so successful in Wichita Public Schools. Okay, we're going to start with Grant.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Cadet Grant Hardner from Southeast High School, Deputy Core Commander on our core staff, and this morning, I would just like to say that it's an honor and privilege to be here to accept this award you have presented us. All 2,500 cadets and I are very thankful for that. The JROTC program is truly incredible. The amount of opportunities it has given me and countless other young adults is amazing. Other than that, thank you, Commissioners. Now more from Cadet Fleming.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners.
You can pull the mic down.
Okay, cool.
There you go.
Thank you.
Welcome.
So, good morning. My name's Lindsey Fleming from Wichita North High School, and I am the Core Command Sergeant Major on, out of the three of us. I am so very grateful for you guys giving us this award. It is, this program has meant a lot to me. It has helped me make friendships. It gave me confidence to be able to speak up here and talk to all of you, and it's given me confidence for job interviews, so thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, I'm Carol Laura from Mead Middle School, and thank you for having us here. I wrote a speech for Colonel Hester. At the time, it was December 5th of 2018, and I started the speech with, "This essay is going to be why I should be one of the middle schoolers to go receive an award." I'm going to name my top three reasons. My first reason is that I am not only a recognized cadet from Mead Middle School, but I'm also recognized at other schools. Sure, other schools are competition, and we always compete to see who's better, but most importantly, other schools are also friends. Also, I'm one of the highest ranks at my school. In sixth grade, I was chosen for honorary cadet, and I came out, and I came out as the honorary cadet of 2016. I ended up being an amazing child, apparently, but I was always really shy and not being able to talk, because I'm just a closed child, but leadership has showed me to open up. My second reason is that I'm not just involved with leadership, but I'm also involved with my school and community. For the leadership program, I'm involved doing community service, such as going to Cowtown, doing color guard, and et cetera. In school, I'm involved by helping out with the sports. Right now, I have been chosen for a girls' basketball manager, and today is our first game. For the community, I help out with parades, and I also dance for the Virgin Mary, and I'm part of the Cathedral of the Immaculate Conception. My last reason is because I'm respectful to everyone. I show respect to everyone, even if I'm mad at them, even if I don't care about them. I shouldn't take out my anger on them, because they're people, and we all make mistakes. Also, my personality is leading to respect, and in conclusion, these are my three reasons why I should join you to receive this award.
Thank you.
I think what Carol said says it all. Thank you again for this award. We sincerely appreciate it. And on a personal note, it is so good to be back in the school district. I can assure everyone that there just is no better school district than Wichita Public Schools. Thank you very much.
Colonel Hester, Assistant Superintendent Irvin, cadets, thank you very much for being here today. And cadets, before you leave, can I hear a "Hooah!"
One, two, three. Hoo! One more time. One, two, three. Hooah!
Very good. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item C, Public Hearing for the Adoption of the Safety Standard for Platform Lifts and Stairway Chairlifts, 2017 Edition.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good morning. Chris Labrum, MABCD. As Kate stated, amending the platform chairlift portion of our elevator code, so one of three codes within that family. This is a public hearing for the adoption today. The codes we work with in the elevator conveyance area are created by the American Society of Mechanical Engineers. This portion of that code, or this code within that, is specific to commercial ADA compliant lifts. Our package, and that covers wheelchair lifts as well as stairway chairlifts. So the stairway chairlifts are generally a residential application, but we do have those in some commercial applications in which they then are annually inspected within our program. It includes five associated amendments. The amendment package that you all and the public has seen is bigger than that, because we did take the amendments in this section and applied them across all of the elevator codes. We had several deletions due to obsolete equipment, due to technology changes, and then our administrative and language changes that we put into that, again, were applied to all sections of our Unified Building and Trade Code. The latest adoption of this code was in 2017. That included, again, all three elevator and conveyance codes that we use. This version, the version available at that time, was 14. We elected to go- We elected to go ahead and adopt so that we would not be making such a large leap into future codes. Now that the 2017 safety standard is out, we want to go ahead and adopt this to, one, keep us on cycle, two, that code has incorporated a fair amount of technology that we like, as well as the two bullets you see there, that it brings relocatable wheelchair lifts into, under the umbrella of regulation or enforcement. And then, again, communication technology has continued to advance and incorporates that. We've seen no safety or management issues with these codes. They've been great to work with. The majority of our amendments, as we discussed when we walked the halls with you all, is were administrative in nature, language cleanup, again, deletion of obsolete equipment and some changes in our language. One example of that is we found where we had stated replacement when talking about permits and inspections, and we needed to state alteration. For example, we don't inspect something if you just replace a broken switch or a broken piece of equipment. We permit it and inspect it if you actually alter the equipment. So that's one example of most of those. We do believe that this does a great job of providing for public safety. And again, we continue to bring a little bit more of this in, and specific to this case, the ADA community and the need to ensure that we're looking out for those unique situations, especially if there's a temporary setup to culminate accessibility. This does also assist in providing support for local business. In this world, businesses tend to design to the code. They design and build to what's in the code. So having the latest code adopted greatly reduces the amount of red tape they deal with through a variance or something else they may need to use, or may otherwise need in order to use the latest technology. So again, we do see that as assisting, helping them, saving them a little bit of time and money. As with all of our codes, it will apply across our entire jurisdiction to the 18 smaller cities that we contract with here in Sedgwick, as well as Butler and Sumner Counties where we contract with them. To reemphasize, our contractors have been very cooperative with these requirements and have contributed greatly to the code as you have, that you have in front of you. This was initiated and approved unanimously by the Board of Electrical Appeals. It has also had a great amount of stakeholder coordination. We always do talk about the Builders Association. Again, this is a commercial code, so we involve them. They are aware of it, but they did not have a lot of involvement in this because it's not a direct impact to them. They do, however, approve. I do want to talk about a few of the major changes that you see in the code. This one, when you have an enclosed chairlift such as this, previous codes required a safety switch at the bottom of the lift to avoid someone being pinched or crushed. They did not require that switch at the top. That was noted. That's been corrected. That's in the code. So again, we removed any amendments that, in our UBTC specific to that. We'll go with the basic code with a safety switch at the top, safety switch at the bottom. Another major change is the relocatable lifts, which we do have some of our schools, as well as theaters, and a few of our churches do have some of these. They were not previously with, regulated by the code. They now will be, will ask that these are permitted and that they are inspected going forward, again, to ensure the safety piece associated with that. And then, in the design of chairlifts, it was also realized in earlier versions of the code that they had not included language to ensure that wheelchair lifts are, have engineering criteria, as well as laboratory testing that is presented to the Code Enforcement Agency. The code has since corrected that. So again, we are utilizing the baseline code, and we've removed any language from our UBT C that otherwise addressed that. Maintenance, another thing the code has incorporated is to have maintenance records with the equipment. This just ensures that an inspector is able to see any trends with that equipment, any issues, anything that we may need to be aware of or incorporate in our use of the program. So again, the maintenance records are always to be kept. This just ensures that they're on site for an inspector to review prior to anything we would do permitting or inspecting. And then, as also stated earlier, one of the big advances that we like and have applied across all of our elevator codes is the emergency communications. Advances in cellular technology mean that with voice over internet protocol or other wireless device in the conveyance, that we are not worried about requiring an extra landline. Specifically, a lot of buildings are built now with no land phone lines to them. They're all wireless. So if we were to require them to run a landline merely for the elevators, that's quite a bit of added expense and extra engineering. So we have removed that reference. And as long as there's a wireless communication system in place that meets code and requirements, then we are happy with that. So with that is our recommendation, Commissioners, that you open this for public comment, receive public comment, close the public hearing, and adopt the proposed code. I'll also gladly stand for questions.
Thank you. First of all, does anyone have any questions before I open it up, public comment? I know that we've all been briefed on this several times, actually, so I'm not sure if you'll have any questions. I don't see any questions from the Commission. And then, at this time, I'd like to open up public hearing for the adoption of the Safety Standard for Platform Lifts and Stairway Chair Lifts. Anyone wish to speak on this? Seeing no one, I'd like to close the public hearing and bring it back to the Commission. Commissioner Howell.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to thank Director Labrum for your work on this, and you've been very gracious, allowing us plenty of time to interact and discuss and understand these changes. Also, I want to say thank you to Courtney and Chris in the back of the room for your work as well. And I think there's a number of improvements. I think the wireless communications is very interesting to me. It saves money, and I think it's just, it's a tremendous improvement in the previous code. Enhances safety and ADA, safety issues and maintenance records. These are all good things. I was concerned about the portable lifts that are out there. I understand they'll be grandfathered, but nevertheless, they still meet these requirements. Even if you were to inspect them, there's really no issues with those lifts that are out there, those portable lifts. And any manufacturers of these lifts would automatically meet these requirements anyway, so there should be no problem with that. And then, I understand that on the UL testing issue, should there ever be a situation that would develop that was outside that certification and testing, there would be a waiver option that they could make an application for a waiver. It'd be unlikely this would ever happen, but I assume that conversation could happen should that ever, something like that ever develop. So I am very pleased with your work. I want to say thank you for doing a great job. I appreciate your willingness to have long discussions about all these little issues. I call this kind of like the weeds of being a county commissioner. Regulations is something people don't, I think we, you know, have a lot of interest in, but I do. I think this is really important stuff. So just want to say thank you for all your work. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion. We would adopt the 2017 edition for the safety standards for platform lifts and stairway chairlifts.
Thank you. We have a motion. Commissioner Meitzner.
Yeah, just a point of clarification. In our material, there's a resolution number in that section. Is this the resolution that we're adopting? I just want, we just want to make sure that we want, might want to amend the signature page because it's got the previous council or commission on it. Is that right?
We have it done.
You have it done? The right one? Okay. Thank you.
And Commissioner Meitzner, that's a good question. And the thought would be that we, of course, would have to update the signature page once you, once a new chair and chair pro tem have been elected. But the other piece to that is with regard to Commissioner Howell's motion, probably the most appropriate motion would be to approve the resolution that's in the backup materials on this item because it does have differences than what's in the standard code.
I'd like to amend my motion to say what you said, to adopt the backup material resolution. Is that acceptable?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. We do have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ain't further discussion. Seeing none, Madam Kirk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item D, Request to Consider in Addition to the 2019 Legislative Platform, Support for Legislation Allowing Sedgwick County as an Urban Area, the Power to Abate Nuisance Properties in a Manner That Would Afford Constitutional Due Process.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good morning again. Chris Labrum, MABCD for the record. And so, again, to the request to add this to the legislative process, so we do have, currently have a nuisance code in Sedgwick County. That code works on, and is generally complaint-driven. So when we receive from whatever avenue, a citizen, Commissioner yourselves, a issue that needs an investigation, we send an inspector out. We take a look at that, and the process begins. If it's validated as a nuisance or meeting the definition of a nuisance within our code, they receive a notice of violation and they're given a compliance period. So a request to, is generally 15 days to correct the nuisance. If it's a larger issue, something that needs more work, we may give them additional time. If that is not complied with and they do not seek and receive an extension to that, then they receive a uniform criminal complaint. If the nuisance situation is still not rectified, that does then go into a court process in which a judge would generally use an injunction-type action to order them to clean it up. If that is, and still not done at that time, then you're looking at potential citations or actions from the judge in that vein. But we are not allowed, or do not have the authority, to use self-help powers to either abate an emergency or a excessive, I should say, situation, or to assess that cost to any property owner. This does have precedence in Kansas case law in which counties lack that authority to abate and then again to assess. So what we are requesting is that the legislative agenda consider enabling legislation specifically for Sedgwick County. This would be based on our urban area designation, and it would give you all the ability to create and enforce an abatement code. So we do want to also inform the public of our intent with this. We are not looking to do anything drastic compared to what we do now. Its intended usage would still remain as a tool of last resort in extreme cases. So this would not do anything to interrupt or change the current process. That would still be applied. Members, individuals, property owners would still have numerous warnings, numerous notifications, and opportunities to correct the situation. We do feel this may give us an avenue to get to some expanded resources to assist in those areas where, due to age, health, financial situation, members may be in a situation of having a hard time taking care of it themselves. And we have some similar programs to that in the city that I would like to, and want to work on expanding out to the county. Again, this would kind of add another tool and an avenue along with that. We still see this as an action that would take place post-court conviction and post any compliance period given by a judge expiring. We would obviously want to protect constitutional due process with all of that. But at that point, it would give us an option to, that MABCD would be able to administer such a program. We do see that the Board of County Commissioners and/or, probably and a advisory board appointed by this commission, would oversee the process and have the approval authority over that. We would not want MABCD to expand our authority or our reach beyond what the elected officials would provide us. So with that, there's obviously a lot of discussion that can take place with this, but the bottom line is that this request would simply be asking for state legislation that would remove the restriction from a county having this option, and it would allow us then to create that abatement code. So we do recommend that BOCC add support for legislation allowing Sedgwick County as an urban area, the power to abate nuisance properties in a manner that would afford constitutional due process.
Thank you, Director Labrum. For the public that may have not have been following this, we've been working on our legislative agenda for some time, and when we adopted what we've got so far as a legislative agenda, there was some discussion to make sure that whatever we do, if we add this to our agenda, ensures that we don't violate someone's constitutional rights and property rights and so forth. So we've been working this now for the past couple of weeks. There's a little bit of time crunch on it because here in the very near future, the turnaround will happen up in Topeka, and after that time, we're not able to add anything else to our legislative agenda or get any new bills on. So that's why it was added to today's agenda. So the purpose of this, I know Commissioner Howell has been working with our attorneys to try and find a way that we can craft this so that we can accomplish what we need to do and yet not violate anyone's personal rights. So that's where we're at today, and I'll let Commissioner Howell explain it a little further. Commissioner Howell.
Well, thank you, Chairman. I, again, want to say thank you for all your work on this and as well as the council's offices and numerous meetings with me to bring this to this point. Our initial platform language said something to the effect they wanted to give, we wanted to ask for counties to have the same abatement powers as cities. And that was problematic for numerous reasons. A lot of things in the county are just much different than what you see in urban-city settings. And so trying to find a nice balance has been the challenge, and I think that this brings that balance back to, back in front of us. What makes this one different, I think, is the idea that we want to respect and uphold the constitutional private property rights of our citizens to the best of our ability. And this is a very gracious process where we would find a health and safety code violation, we would work with the property owner very graciously over a long period of time that might culminate in a court setting with a conviction and a possible fine, at which point there would be maybe a small window where they would still have a final attempt to, a final effort to get the nuisance abated by the property owner. And should that fail, then it would go to this nuisance, this advisory board, and then finally to the BOCC. And that just to me puts an action at the very end of that very long and gracious process. We have, people may not know this, but the community of Oaklawn, for example, is an unincorporated area. It's very city-like, but it's not inside of a city. So there is no powers to abate properties over there. And I've been working very diligently trying to resolve some of the problems in the Oaklawn community, but it's been very challenging to see something actually remedied. One of the recent cases was they spent approximately a year. Our council's office did a great job, spent about a year trying to work with, and by the way, in your office, Director Labrum did a tremendous job, working with the property owner, trying to bring this to some type of conclusion. Where we're at right now is there was a conviction recently with a $200 fine payable by $10 per month, but no abatement of the problem. And it is a health and safety issue. And so that's what brings me to the point, that we just need something in the toolbox that gives us a way to resolve this at the end of the day, at the end of the spectrum. There must be some way to resolve the problem. And I think this very long and gracious process is sensitive to constitutional private property rights. And as elected officials, we would be the final authority in whatever happens there. And finally, I don't think it was stated from your perspective, but I think that as I've talked to the accounting folks, our CFO, that we would also need to appropriate money in our budget to handle these types of issues. And I would expect, just from my experience here, maybe one or two of these a year at the most. Very, it's not likely this would be used very much.
I would agree with that, Commissioner. So if I may, because I kind of skipped past the picture that I put in the show, so that's an example of an extreme case where, oops, if I can get to it. That's an example where, okay, it looks like it's gone, but we had an extreme case where there's a house that's kind of collapsing in on itself and a fence has been put around it. So at that point, if we get, if you get a call from a citizen that comes to us or citizen calls, that's no longer a violation of our code. It's fenced. It's safe. So that would give us exactly that, a chance to evaluate that and see if we do have a further unsafe situation there that should be remedied or rectified by the, you know, that we're in an abatement action may be appropriate.
And of course, the concern is that we would, we don't want to create a very, we don't create a police, a police state environment in the county. We don't want to go out there and aggressively seek code violations and go after people administratively. That's not what this is. This is the other end of the spectrum. This is very gracious, very constitutional, giving them every opportunity to remedy the problem. And we're not taking the property away. We're simply saying, fix the health and safety issues at the end of the day, and if you don't, we will step in finally and do something to remedy those very narrowly defined issues. And again, we would not be able to abate just anything we want, but the things are defined by the courts and the code violation that started the process. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I think this is time for us to move forward. I would make a motion. We would add this item to the 2019 legislative platform.
Thank you. We have a motion. Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would compliment Chris. I know your work on this has been good. I would compliment Chris, I know your work on this has been good, and also, Commissioner Howell, thank you for helping on this, because it is, it's a tough situation. I'm familiar with this similar process in the municipalities that do have the flexibility to do that. And I think you were right on, as long as we keep a respect for the property rights and the efforts of the family, or lots of times it's elderly, lots of times, and the flexibility to extend a period of time to correct the measurement and blah, I think it's all really good, and thank you for your work in opinioning into this process, so that I would be more than willing to second that unless somebody else wants to. But I just want to thank both of you for this work.
We have a motion and a second, and I don't see any further discussion on it. I do know that there are at least four cases right now in Sedgwick County. There's one in Commissioner Howell's district, I think two in Commissioner O'Donnell's district, and one in my district that we've been working on for well over a year. So it doesn't happen very often, but it does happen. So we have a motion and a second to add this to our legislative platform. I see no other discussion. Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Next item, please.
Item E, Presentation on Property Tax Prepayment.
There's my favorite Sedgwick County Commissioner. Oh, it's not Commissioner. Treasurer. Treasurer. We'll get it right.
Good morning, Commissioners. Linda Kazire, County Treasurer. About a month ago, Chairman Dennis contacted me, because he'd read an article in the NACO newsletter, or the magazine, I don't recall which one, and he said, a county in California is offering prepayments for their constituents. And I said, well, we already do that. And he didn't know, so he asked me to do a presentation, and we postponed it several weeks because we wanted to make sure that Pete and Lacy were here, so that they would get to see and understand our new, well, it's not new, the process for tax prepayments. As you're well aware, I send everyone several greetings a year, at least two, telling them their taxes are due. But this prepayment program was established back in 2002. Former Commissioner Unruh was on the committee that allowed us to get a home resolution to get this done. And it helps people that want to pay their taxes in advance, their house is paid for, they might be elderly. I probably need to go back, Kate. Thank you, Kate. I'd had Randy come up, but it might not work too well. It helps people that are on a fixed income, their house is paid off, they don't have an escrow, they might have a mortgage, but they don't have an escrow account. And this is entirely at the discretion of our office, but it's a very good program. It's, the nice thing about it, it's free. We have about 1,900 participants right now. They can pay in a full-year 10-payment plan, or they can do half-year 5-payments. We have the application out on our website, and we accept people into the program, provided they are not delinquent on any of the properties they wish to enroll in this program. Statutorily, we just cannot allow people to make prepayments on delinquent personal or real property taxes. And I see Pete's making some notes. We do keep this money in a separate holding account in the Treasurer's Office, and then we apply the payments that we receive monthly towards the bill at the end of the year. And we provide the taxpayer with coupons and envelopes, so that they know that they have a coupon due, it's like a car payment book, they probably don't do those anymore, but you just mail your coupon back to us with your payment, and they have to agree to make the 10 payments from January through October. And what we do, we base it on the previous tax year's bill. So if you're in the prepayment plan for 2019, we're going to use what you owed in 2018, we're going to divide that into 10 payments. Then we're going to send you a letter in November saying, this is what the final amount owed is, and you have until December 20th to pay that bill. We do ask people to make their payments on time, we do give them a little leadway. We very rarely have removed anyone from the program. And here's what our coupon looks like. So as you can see, this person in the middle is, on October 10th, is going to owe us $136.59. They have made payments from January 10th through the end. So for example, my 2019 taxes are going to be $1,700. So I'm going to make 10 payments every month. I'm on a fixed income, my house is paid for, I have no escrow. I'm going to pay $1,365.90. You're going to get a letter in November saying you're going to owe $334.10. It's a lot easier for people on fixed incomes or no escrow accounts to do this versus trying to come up with $750 in one time. So that's why we have so many participants in the program. And all you have to do is make an application, we have all the information on our website, click the Prepay Property Taxes on the left side of the screen, and we will get you enrolled. Questions?
Mr. Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just was, number one, thank you for being here, for explaining this option. I think it's a great opportunity for some people that need to manage their monthly budget a little bit differently, that's fine. But I'm curious, in this, in the 21st century, we're making most of our bills through electronic payments, we don't write checks, I think we maybe only write a couple of checks a year. Is there an option for someone to EBT on this plan?
Not at this time, we need to finish finalization with DIO staff to allow ACHs to go through. Currently, we do not.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Meitzner?
Yeah, thank you. Linda, great presentation. So we, in essence, serve as an escrow agent for people that have had their houses paid off.
Correct.
That's fantastic. Thank you, Chairman, for bringing that attention and for us to do that. That one slide where you showed the coupon, is that like a half-off coupon for your taxes?
Yeah, it is. Are you going to tell that story, or you want me to?
No, no, no. I know you're famous for doing that.
Pete went to the East Kellogg office the other day, and one of the clerks waited on him, and he told them that he had a half-price coupon on his taxes, that I gave it to him. And the clerk instantly called the manager out, and she came out, and she said, I don't think you've got a coupon that will allow you to do that. And they had no idea who Pete was, so that's what made it even funnier, because they're like, there was this guy in here, and I'm like, oh, he's one of the new Commissioners. So now that I've embarrassed you, Pete, no half-price coupons.
Thank you. Ms. Kazire, thank you very much for being here and bringing this up. I thought it was an innovative idea when I read it in the NACO newspaper, and then I called Linda and said, this is not innovative, we've been doing it for years. So I didn't know about it, I didn't figure that a lot of the taxpayers here in Sedgwick County knew about it, so I asked her to do this presentation today, and I do appreciate that, and hopefully, a lot of people start volunteering to do this, because it's a lot easier to come up with 10 small payments and one maybe a little bit bigger than it is.
It really is.
Come up with half of that each time.
And it was a large county in California, I believe, you told me, that was the one that was looking at it, and I hope they do it. We have some other Treasurers across Kansas that do it, that kind of piggybacked off of our prepayment plan, so I'm very happy about it.
Very good.
All righty.
Well, thank you for being here.
Thank you for asking me.
I make a motion that we receive and file. Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Next item, please.
Item F, reconsideration of Item 3 of the minutes of the December 6, 2018, meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts concerning storage media and storage devices.
Good morning, Joe. Good morning, sir. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. This item for storage media and devices was originally brought before you on December 12th, and at that meeting, it was decided to defer until more research could be done in answering certain questions as to how and when these would be used. Pardon me. Since that time, subsequent meetings were conducted, and we believe those questions have been answered. So at this time, we'd like to bring back, for your recommendation, this item, and the recommendation is to utilize two vendors, CDW Government LLC and Adorama Incorporated, and that's to establish contract rates for one year with two one-year options to renew. So happy to answer, try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of this item.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would claim responsibility for this, this is kind of, I guess, my fault, because I asked to push this off, and the Board was gracious to allow me some time to, I guess, understand this a little bit deeper. My concern was that we would potentially be buying very expensive hardware encrypted flash drives or thumb drives, whatever term you like to use, and we'd be handing these out without any type of discretion, perhaps be wasting some taxpayer money for things that don't need that type of security. I think there's been quite a bit of review, and I think that this has been a great conversation for everybody involved. I think that we've tightened up our intent to use these a little bit, we still do need some, and that's why we're reconsidering this today, so, but to the idea that we would, I think we may be less than the need for as many of these, and so I think this was a tremendous change. Anticipate maybe ballparking maybe a dozen of these a year or so, we don't need huge amounts. And if someone needs to do a PowerPoint to their Rotary Club for something that's not secure, they're not going to use this device, they'll use, you know, a $10 thumb drive rather than a very expensive hardware encrypted thumb drive like you see on this list. So I appreciate the great work of Director Thomas and others involved in this discussion, and so I just want to say I appreciate all the work and the grace of the Board. So I would like to make a motion to approve the recommendations of the Board on Bids and Contracts.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Thank you. Next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Stolz, Interim County Manager, recommend you approve consent items G through J this morning.
How about G through, Gulf through Lima? No, I'm sorry, G through J, you're right. I wasn't looking at it correctly. Good job. I move, we approve Gulf through Julia.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, seeing no discussion, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Next item, please.
New Business Part 2, Item K, selection of one member of the Board of County Commissioners to serve as chairman through January 8, 2020.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First of all, I want to express my appreciation for the honor that the Commission has afforded me for the last year of representing Sedgwick County, our 3,000 great employees that we have in Sedgwick County, the leadership that we have. It's been an interesting year, I think everybody will admit that, but I think we've accomplished a lot, we've still got a lot to accomplish in the future. But again, it's been my honor to represent the 3,000 employees, they are great, they do a fantastic job every single day of the year, and they are truly working for you as part of our motto. Thank you very much for allowing me to serve. Commissioner O'Donnell, do you have anything this morning?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. Every year, the Chair of the County Commission gets a plaque with its own gavel on it attached, but this year, obviously, it goes to Commissioner David Dennis. I first got to know David Dennis in 2016, when we were both running for the Sedgwick County Commission. And since that time, I have really found myself respecting David and have nothing but admiration for what David Dennis has done, not just as a Commissioner, but his entire life of being a dedicated public servant, both as a Colonel in the Air Force, which is not an easy rank to achieve, to coming back after that, serving 259. You were even awarded the Public Servant of the Year Award while a teacher, and your son has also won that as well, and I think you're probably the only father-son that's ever won that award, and that goes out to one 259 employee each year, and they have 6,000 to 7,000 employees, right? So they're about double our size. So huge, huge honor. He went on to serve in the State School Board, where you were elected twice as Chair of the State Board of Education, and then out of that retirement, he decided to come back and serve Sedgwick County because he saw that there was a need. Obviously, this has been a stressful year for the Chairman, for a lot of issues that had nothing to do with him, but it's been a year of growth, and a year of opportunity, and we're looking forward to 2019 being a year that Sedgwick County restabilizes and refocuses what our core missions are. But Chairman Dennis, the entire community is blessed because of your leadership, I'm blessed because of your friendship, and I know you're looking forward to serving with Commissioners Cruz and Meitzner as well, and you will do nothing but continue to build consensus, and staff truly respects and admires you as well. So thank you so much for your service, and I'm just privileged to be here alongside you. So, thank you. [applause] You should stand up for another picture. Yeah. Probably wouldn't look so awkward. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Again, thank you to all the Commissioners for allowing me to serve for the last year, and to all of our citizens in Sedgwick County, especially the ones that voted for me a couple of years ago, that put me in this position, and especially, as I said, for the staff. But with that, we do have an item that we need to talk about, and that's selection of one member of the Board of County Commissioner to serve as the Chairman through January 2020. The way that we're going to do this is the same way that we've done it the past two years that I'm very familiar with, and any Commissioner can nominate one of the other Commissioners, and it does not require a second. Once any nominations are complete, we will then go through with a voice vote, the Madam Clerk will call on each Commissioner to state who they would like to have as the Chairman for the next year. So with that, Commissioner Meitzner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Based on everything that I've been involved with personally, in the, serving the citizens of this community in my previous role, and then my new role, I think it's appropriate at this time to make a motion for Chairman David Dennis to serve another term as Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other nominees? Any other nominees? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Chairman Dennis?
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Dennis.
Commissioner Cruz?
Dennis.
Commissioner Howell?
Dennis.
Chairman Dennis?
Dennis. Again, thank you very much for the honor for one more year, I sincerely appreciate it, and I appreciate the trust that the Board has put in me. With that, we have one more item, and we're going to use the exact same procedure for the Pro Tem, and do I have a motion for Pro Tem for serving until 2020? I would like to nominate Commissioner Meitzner as Pro Tem. Do I have any other nominees? Any other nominees? Any other nominees? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Meitzner.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Meitzner.
Commissioner Cruz?
Meitzner.
Commissioner Howell?
Meitzner.
Chairman Dennis?
Commissioner Meitzner. Very good. Well, thank you for the new leadership team, we look forward to serving together for the next year. [applause] Madam Clerk, next item.
Legislative Issues.
Thank you. Mr. Papoun?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mike Papoun, Interim County Counselor. As you're aware, the legislature has started in earnest this week. There have been four bills that we're aware of at this time that have been prefilled that affect counties, I'd be happy to review those if you're interested. Obviously, county staff and our office are tracking those bills, and we'll keep the Commission informed on that legislation.
Good. We talked about those four bills yesterday during
As you're aware, the legislature has started in earnest this week. There have been four bills that we're aware of at this time that have been prefilled that affect counties. I'd be happy to review those if you're interested. Obviously, county staff and our office are tracking those bills, and we'll keep the Commission informed on that legislation.
Good. We talked about those four bills yesterday during staff meeting. Does anyone have any, the Commissioners have any questions on any of those bills that are already at work?
No.
And next week, I think on Wednesday, we have the Government Day up in Topeka, so I think most of the Commissioners will be going to Topeka to speak with our legislators on Wednesday. Actually, I'll be going up on Tuesday for another conference and staying through the legislative conference. So I look forward to seeing all of our Commissioners with the legislators next week. The nice thing about it, we'll have our new palm cards ready by then with the addition that we just added today, and with the new Commissioners' names on the back of the palm card. So we look forward to that. If nothing else for legislative issues, next item, please.
Other.
Other. Do any Commissioners have anything for other this morning? Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman Dennis. I just want to say thank you real quick to everyone sitting up here. You guys have been so gracious as far as kind of showing me the ropes, going from the private sector to the public sector has been interesting, to say the least. But I just, I really want to thank God for keeping me faithful and showing me that I can do this, and there are a lot of people who are supporting me. I want to thank my daughters for going through the rigorous campaign and all the kind of scrutiny and everything that comes along with it. My friends and family, and to the 16,000 voters who voted for me. That was really incredible and humbling. And to everyone else in Sedgwick County who has really supported me along the way. So just real quickly, you know, there have been a lot of labels thrown around about the Commission, about me, about just anything in general. And I just want to say really quickly that those labels that we define ourselves by and that others define us are what is dividing us. And right now, we need to come together, and we need to eliminate those labels and not let them derail us from what we want to accomplish. It's really no secret that there has been some reputation issues with the County Commission. And really, I just want to say the only issue I see is that we're focused on the wrong things. We need to really focus on the 2,500 citizens who serve the half a million people who live here in Sedgwick County. Because, you know, for the past two months, I have toured a lot of our departments, and it is really remarkable to see the longevity of staff, how many people have worked for this county and have worked here 10, 20, 30, 40 years. That is really remarkable and impressive for me to see. Sedgwick County has dedicated and smart employees, and I'm so excited to learn from each and every one of you because I have a lot to learn, and I understand that, and I'm here to listen and learn. It's a new day for Sedgwick County. I just want to mention that. It's a new day. The first time I ever came into this Commission meeting, you could cut the air with a knife. And I just want to say that while I respect the formality of what we do here, we can lighten things up a little bit. What we do is important, but we don't have to be so stiff. We can have a little fun with what we do. So we have a new Commission. We have a new opportunity to move forward, but we have to do that with vision and focus. And we have to focus on cooperation. We have to focus on cooperating with our community leaders, with our other city leaders all across in Valley Center, in Derby, in Mulvane, in Park City, and Goddard, all of the cities that encompass Sedgwick County. We have to be a leader in advocating for mental health services and finding solutions for that. We have to be a leader in economic growth. I want people to stay. I want my smart, capable friends to stay here and not leave. I've seen too many leave, and I don't want that to happen. And I want to be a leader here in the Midwest that says, "I want to move to Sedgwick County." They have something really great going on, and we can be the leaders to get to bring people here. We need to start a conversation about protecting our environment. We have to be a leader in that, and that's something that I really want to start discussing. We have to be a leader in including all voices, male, female, all different races, anything. We have to make sure that people feel included. We have to make sure that when people walk through those doors, it's comfortable for them to be here. I was so proud of Carol Grant and Lindsay, the three cadets today. This is not an easy environment to have a conversation in or to even mention anything. So I really commend them for getting up here and speaking their truth. And I'm so proud to see the youth in our community really stepping up to the plate. Our differences make us stronger. We are more similar than we are different, and I just really want to reiterate that. We have to learn from our differences and understand that we can make a difference because we're better together. So most importantly, we just need an effective government of strong leaders. We have to get back to basics, compassion, empathy, positivity, and we have to focus on moving the ball forward. So I just want to kind of close with a couple of things. There's a quote by Margaret Mead that says, "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world. Indeed, that's the only thing that ever has." So I'm just going to ask you again, what happens when you throw a pebble in a pond? You can answer. What happens? It ripples, right? We are in the middle of the United States. We are 200 miles from the exact center of the United States. We are literally the middle of the pond. What can we do here in Sedgwick County that we can ripple out and make effects that will go from coast to coast? Because we can do that. So I just want to say thank you again. I am here to listen. I am here to learn. And I thank you all for your leadership, and I look forward to learning from each and every one of you. So with that, I just want to say you can contact me. Contact me via email. Contact me via my Facebook page. I am a communications person. I have a degree in communications. It's what I do. It's what I love to do. So please contact me. The phone number at, I think it's 660-3900?
9300.
9300. Oh, my gosh, I'm a little mixed up. Excuse me. I'm also going to be having a newsletter that's going to be sent out, so if you want to sign up for that, you can sign up on our website for that. A couple of the things I would really like to, I know that Bishop Wade Moore mentioned all of the events this weekend as far as Dr. King events, so please attend those. Take your children to those. There's also a Women's March this weekend at 1:00. We're going to start at the Keep Row the Plains. And there's also a panel discussion at the Machinist Hall for anyone interested in running for an office. It is something that is kind of scary and overwhelming, so if there are some people who are interested in running for an office, we're going to have a panel discussion mostly focused on women, but we'll include some men if you all want to join. But again, just thank you so much for your attention, for your positivity, and I look forward to learning and listening to each and every one of you. Thank you.
Mr. Meitzner.
Oh, thank you, Chairman. Just wanted to, Lacy said quite a bit of encouraging remarks for a new day in our county, and looking forward, I really pushed the button just to say thank you to my colleagues for a voice of support to be the Pro Tem coming into 2019. And I look forward to serving the people that have elected all of us. And I just really want to try to do it with, lend my element of respect and dignity to the people we serve and to the county government to deliver the services. So I'm looking forward with the new year. So thank you again, and thank you all for being supportive of us. And congratulations to Lacy for joining our Commission.
Thank you likewise.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and congratulations on serving as Chair again. I believe in recent history, as far as, as long as there's been five Commission districts, I don't believe anybody's served two years in a row. So that's a great, great honor for you, similar to you on the School Board, serving two years in a row. I just wanted to welcome publicly Lacy and Pete. Obviously, it's no secret I was Pete's favorite Council member when I served on the Wichita City Council. And I'd been telling him for two years, this true story, right, Pete? I've been telling you for two years, you need to run for David, David Unruh's seat when, because he had been planning on retiring, because Sedgwick County could not lose Pete Meitzner's leadership, whether it was at the city or here. I didn't think he was too interested in going up to Topeka. But our entire community, the last seven, well, it'll be eight years in April that we were elected to the City Council together. Pete has been a true community leader, and so I'm delighted that he's over here, and I'm delighted to be working with Lacy as well. I know you don't like labels, but when people ask me, "What are my thoughts on Lacy Cruz?" I say, "She is delightful," so, and a breath of fresh air. And I think she brings a dynamic that was much needed on this Commission to be more representative of the public at large. So I'm very happy she's up here and continuing to serve with Commissioner Howell, and Dennis will be wonderful as well. But welcome to our two new Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other comments. I'd like to just close with a couple other issues. First of all, congratulations to Lacy Cruz and Pete Meitzner.
Thank you.
We certainly look forward to serving with you for the next two years, and I know that I'll be here for sure, hopefully beyond that. Congratulations, Pete, for the new Pro Tem.
Yes, sir.
I think that's great. Thank you to all the Commissioners for selecting me to serve once again as our Chairman and to select Pete Meitzner as the Pro Tem. I look forward to working with Commissioner Howell, Commissioner O'Donnell, Commissioner Cruz, Commissioner Meitzner. I think that we'll be a great team. I look forward to the next year. I look forward to continuing to serve 500,000 citizens here in Sedgwick County. I look forward to supporting 3,000 employees. I need to make sure that I thank my wife and my family. They're the ones that support me, allow me to do these things, and they've supported me now. My wife and I have been married for 50 years this past summer, and she has been very understanding because I've been gone most of those 50 years. Maybe that's why we last so well. 29 years in the military, caused me to be away from home an awful lot of time, and now I have a full-time job again. So service is something that I truly believe in. But there are a couple other events that I want to mention before that we adjourn today. First of all, I had the honor of attending the USS Wichita Commissioning over the past weekend. We had a huge turnout for both the banquet on Friday night and the actual commissioning on Saturday. If you go on Facebook, there are thousands of pictures out there of the event. There are tons of information available. But the main thing is that this ship is going to carry the name Wichita around the world for the next 25 to 30 years. The crew members have the name Wichita sewn on the sleeve of their uniform, so they are representing us. We need to adopt them for the next 25 or 30 years and say, "You belong to Wichita, and we're very proud of you." You can tell that I'm always proud of our military. They're the ones that give us the freedoms to do what we're doing. I can't say enough about what the military sacrifices every single day for the citizens here in the United States, and I am so proud of each and every one of them, but I'm doubly proud of the crew of the USS Wichita for carrying our name. So I want to thank them. The other thing that's important that's coming up is this afternoon, actually, I'm going to go out to the airport, and we're going to meet a team of individuals that are coming on to evaluate McConnell Air Force Base for the Air Force Installation Award. They're up against one other base, and that's Ramstein in Germany, which I had been stationed at quite a number of years ago. But the thing that McConnell has that Ramstein could never touch is that they have a community that loves them. So we need, if you see this team moving around the city or anything in the next three days, we have a reception for them this evening. We have dinner for them tomorrow night. We have a luncheon on Friday night. So there are a number of things that are happening there. But it's, there's only two bases up for the Installation Excellence Award. And that was established by President Ronald Reagan, I think, in about 1984, 1985 timeframe, to identify bases that are innovative, that can figure out how to do the job better, cheaper, and still support the mission. So this is a very important award that McConnell is up for right now, and we need to make sure that we support McConnell. Another thing that's happening at McConnell is on the 25th of January, that KC-46A arrives. There, it will be a, the plane actually lands at 2:00 p.m., reception right after the plane lands, and then so I think probably the entire Commission will be attending a dinner that night, recognizing the fact that we now have the KC-46 here at McConnell. A great event. The KC-135 has been flying for about as long as I've been alive, unfortunately. And it's still going to be flying probably 25, 30 years from now. And it is a great airplane. It's been re-engined. A lot of happened to that plane, but the KC-46 is going to extend the global reach, global power of the United States Air Force for decades to come. So we're very proud that this is the first base to put the KC-46A. So we look forward to that. So those are some important things that are coming up. I've probably talked long enough because we have a reception at 10:30, and it's almost 10:30 right now. And I don't see anything else that's coming before the Board. Thank you all very much for being here today, and we look forward to seeing you in the reception here in a few minutes. I don't believe we have an executive session scheduled today. If there's nothing else, Madam Clerk, adjourn.
Production and broadcast costs for Sedgwick County Commission meetings have been underwritten by Sedgwick County. KPTS welcomes comments from the public on its broadcast of the County Commission meetings. Viewers are invited to write to County Commission Broadcast, KPTS, 320 West 21st Street North, You're watching KPTS, Hutchinson, Wichita, public television for South Central Kansas. We now join our regularly scheduled program.